Thank you very much, Sean, and good morning, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the special call board meeting on March thirteenth. It's a regular board meeting, I thought. It's a regular board meeting of March thirteenth. I thought I'd let you know that John Chilton, Mary Eves, and I are all here in the Frankfurt office. And I think this is the first time I've been at a meeting at the Frankfurt office in a couple of years, if I'm not mistaken. So, nice to see people in person. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Vicki, are you going to give the legal public statement?
Oops, yes, I can.
I didn't know who else was down there.
For the record, I want to note that this is the meeting of the Kentucky Retirement Systems. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute Section 61.826 and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority offices located at 1260 Louisville Road, Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. I ask if you're speaking and not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within thirty minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to another date.
Thank you very much. And Sheri, roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Atkins. Ms. Bova.
Here.
Ms. Eves.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Piercy.
Here.
Mr. Summers.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheri, and it sounds like we've got a quorum. So is there any public comment?
No, ma'am, no public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have minutes for December fifth, twenty-three, December twentieth, twenty-three, January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four to approve. Is there any discussion? Any changes? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the so-listed minutes of the board.
Second.
Thank you, Pruitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the three minutes, December fifth, twenty-three, December twentieth, twenty-three, and January thirtieth as presented? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is adopted. Thank you very much. Okay, we again get to welcome Adam Gordon to the meeting, and Adam is going to review with us the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-three proportionate share audit. And Adam, you're here?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Good morning, KRS Board members. Again, my name is Adam Gordon. I'm from the Auditor of Public Accounts Office, and I'm the auditor in charge of the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority Proportionate Share Audit for Fiscal Year Twenty-three. Linda Hinton is the Audit Manager, and Matt Frye is my Executive Director. As you know, Kentucky Revised Statute requires that at least once every five years, the APA is to perform KPPA's audit. We audited the financial statements for 2023, and our last audit was in fiscal year eighteen, so now, five years later, we're also doing the proportionate share audit for fiscal year twenty-three. Management is still responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these schedules. The proportionate share schedules report on the cost-sharing retirement plans, employer's share of liabilities, deferred outflows and inflows, and related expenses for both pension and OPEB. Please note, this only involves the cost-sharing plans of KERS, not state police, since state police is a single employer plan and has a hundred percent of the share for its plan. We have audited the schedules prepared by KPPA's actuaries, and we will provide management with two reports. So, starting on page seventeen is the Pension Opinion Letter. There's also a Yellow Book Letter included in the Pension Report. And then, I believe, on page twenty-nine is the OPEB Opinion. And then, after that is the Yellow Book Letter, and the notes were also included. If you all want to view the actual schedules themselves, I believe there is a draft on your all's website. It involved multiple pages, so just to save space in the presentation materials, they weren't included here, so. Our end-of-field work for the audit is planned for the KPPA Board Meeting date, so the letters will be dated March twenty-first. We will then release our report once approved by the full KPPA Board on that date. As part of our audit, we are required to communicate to those charged with governance certain topics. We will be emailing this letter to the Chair of the Audit Committee and the Chair of the full Board, who is then responsible for distributing it to the other Board members. We noted no significant unusual transactions, uncorrected misstatements, significant policy changes, or significant difficulties or disagreements with management. We did not note any unusual issues in this letter, and there were no findings. At this time, again, no findings or issues have come to our attention, and we anticipate issuing an unmodified or clean opinion. With that, that concludes my presentation. I would like, again, greatly appreciate all of management, staff, the actuaries' help for us to complete an efficient audit. And again, I thank all of you. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Gordon? Well, again, I think we've said this before, I want to thank you for a very thorough review. And I know this is not the last meeting that you have, but I think the last meeting we will have with you, and I want to thank you very much for the work that you've done. So with that, is there a motion to accept the proportional share audit? And then, we basically pass it on to KPPA.
Chairman, I have a motion to accept the audit.
Okay, I think, Mary, I think you had the original. Is there a second?
Second, William.
Okay, thank you, William. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay, a hearing none, the motion is adopted, and thank you very much, again.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we have a report of the Joint Retiree Health Plan Committee. And Dr. Miller, we've got you down on the list for this.
Since she is not here, I think Connie Pettyjohn.
Okay. Connie, if you could take over for us, I'd really.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Our meeting was informational. February is the time of year that we round up some of the 2023 information, as well as open enrollment. So, we met on the fifteenth of February and went over the satisfaction results that Humana does yearly. We also have some other informational bullets, too, but I wanted to say that Humana is still, they're highly satisfied with their customer service representative interactions with their members. Their net promoter score remains high. Anything above a fifty is considered excellent, and it was at seventy-two-point-eight-six in 2023. Humana did give us an update on the Inflation Reduction Act because it has some changes for the past couple of years and a couple of years in the future around Part D or Medicare prescription drug benefit. And so, they're looking at something that's going to more than likely increase the premiums for plan year 2025. The out-of-pocket costs for members on Part D, that is, prescription drug coverage, the max out-of-pocket is eight thousand for this year. Next year, it's going down to two thousand. So, that means the member will not have to pay their, they will have met a hundred percent when they reach that two thousand in the plan and would pay the rest of the premium that they normally, the copays and co-insurance based on their benefit. So, we're watching that and the impact because there's some other things that go along with it that may roll out in July. The Medicare annual notice that they do every year, it's where they release the bids in February the first, out to the plans and vendors that are going to bid on the Medicare Advantage Plans and Prescription Drug Plans for the year. And they are waiting now on a sixty-day comment period for the final notice, which will be released April the first. We do suspect there may be some changes here. It looks to me like it's based on the type of benefit you have. You know, if you have more of a generic structure, you may not have as much of an increase in your premium. So, here's two areas that might show some increase in premium. We will not know that until after this call letter is out and then Humana sends the final renewal to us, which is going to be probably July. Is there anything you would like to say, Mr. Low or Ms. Garrison, around this area here?
Thanks, Connie. I would just add that, you know, these changes related to the IRA, while they do enhance the benefit for your membership, in the way that Connie described, it does, it is a overhaul of the Part D drug benefit, which enriches the benefit for the membership, in part by lowering the maximum out-of-pocket to two thousand dollars. The overall impact is material to the plan and will result in increased costs for both KPPA and Humana heading into twenty-five. That twenty-twenty-five is the big year, so the other changes related to the IRA will be less significant in out-years, but this transition for twenty-twenty-five is pretty significant, and there are many elements of it that are not yet, have not yet been defined by CMS. So, we're keeping an eye on that, and we'll keep the Board and KPPA staff up to date as we get further into the spring. The final CMS rate notice that Connie referred to will come out on April first. That's sort of a normal annual publish, sort of an annual rate-setting process by CMS. So, we'll know more about the impact of that after we see that in April.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Humana also presented their campaign for the STARS ready, which is a quality measure that Medicare adjusts most years and asks plans and providers to contribute to. And it's things like, you know, your risk of falls prevention, reminders to do your annual checkup, the colorectal and breast cancers, diabetes eye exams, W's kidney disease, Igloencephalos levels. The areas that have a high significance of chronic disease in our population, they target and identify and, you know, do the outreach, and then Humana gets a STARS ready from Medicare. That also includes some money that would possibly help us keep the premium down. Mr. Low, again, I'm going to ask you to speak to the Baptist Health Medical Group. Any updates there, sir? The contract.
Yeah, no, nothing significant. We continue negotiations with Baptist. So, we do not yet have a new contract, though we're eagerly awaiting one. So, we're hopeful that that will occur. But in either event, your membership is still accessing Baptist providers with no access-to-care issues that we're aware of, and really no change to the member cost share either, given the structure of the benefit. So, we're hopeful that that contract will get done here soon, but that's, we're not quite there yet.
Thank you, Mr. Low. And the last thing I have, I wanted to mention open enrollment. We did have an increase in the phone calls quite a bit. Virtual appointments went up, as well as in-person appointments. So, post-COVID, we're slowly going back to our old practices, plus we've added some new in our outreach. We still kept the webinars, still kept the things we learned during that, well, we couldn't go out in person. And then, we're gradually, and I'll say, Humana is, and so is the Department Employee Insurance, gradually adding back groups and maybe going to a little more of the retiree meetings. I believe we were able to do some of that as well. We didn't have as many webinromes back up at the first of the paragraph. I just want to explain, that's because back in 2022, we had a higher volume of webinromes because we had people that were losing coverage under a plan that DEI was taking away. It was a plan that was fifty-fifty. They really didn't recommend anybody enroll in it, and we had people in that plan that had to make choices, so that's the reason. Otherwise, I think webinromes, they're really working on it, it just was not a mandatory open enrollment. And I think that's pretty much it for our open enrollment and our last year's performance for customer service. Just one little informational thing I wanted to add is that the Department Employee Insurance, Kentucky Employees Health Plan, is going out to the Request for Proposal Bid process this year. So, we will, they did not change any of the benefits they were seeking out there from what the plans currently are. Those plans are branded with the Kentucky, a Kentucky brand, KEHP, so I would assume they're going to keep the Living Well name, but I haven't heard details around a lot of that. We might know more around October because they've just now put out the medical bid, and they've already, are completing the pharmacy bid for the TPAs, our third-party administrators that run those plans. So, we will have a little more information August and definitely September around these areas. Please let me know if you all have questions of me or Humana or anyone in the committee.
Does anybody have any questions? If nobody else does, I have one, and that is, I think what we've understand is with members, there is, with the Baptist issue, there is no additional cost out-of-pocket. I assume there's still additional cost. Who's absorbing the additional cost? Is it KPPA or is it Humana?
No. Humana has the out-of-network benefits where they pay Medicare allowed, but I'll let Mr. Low, might be better to speak to that question.
Yeah, Tracy, I can take that. I mean, it's, Connie's correct, the benefit is structured so that the in- and out-of-network benefits to the member are the same. We do reimburse Baptist at the Medicare-allowed amount, so for any non-part provider, that's the approach to how that's handled. So, there really is no additional cost share or increased costs for either KPPA or the member in this case.
So, is there, where is the additional cost? I assume that there's additional cost because we have insurance that is not being covered. So, is Humana absorbing the additional cost?
Well, I guess if there was additional cost, it would be borne by Humana, correct? So, if there's a difference between in-network contracted rate versus the CMS-allowed rate, yes, Humana would bear that burden there, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No, if there's no questions, then there is no motion on this. We can go to Mike Lamb and the Quarterly Financial Reports.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton. Near the bottom of this page, which is forty-four, you'll see the fiduciary net position at the end of Q2 for all three plans is five-point-five billion dollars. That's eighteen-point-six-seven percent higher than the fiscal year 2023 Q2 amount of four-point-six-six-five billion. This is eight-hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars higher. It's driven by the twenty-eight-point-three-four percent increase in total investments at fair value. All asset classes are up, with the exception of derivatives, when you compare them year to year. If I move on to page forty-five, which is the statement of changes, near the bottom, the increase in fiduciary net position is at four-hundred-and-thirty-four-point-six-million dollars. It's kind of that white line right there, perfect. After you compare that to the two-hundred-and-seventeen-million dollars in the same period of the prior year, we are at two-hundred-and-eighteen-million dollars higher. That's driven by a slight thirty-million-dollar overall increase in contributions, as well as a one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-million-dollar increase in overall net investment income. So, the contributions were seven-hundred-and-fifty-one-point-eight million last year versus seven-hundred-and-eighty-two million this year, and net investment income is two-hundred-and-fifty-one-million, two-hundred-and-fifty-one-point-six million this year compared to sixty-three-point-nine million. If I page down to page forty-six, we'll look at the net contributions, and this shows for all three plans that there were positive net contributions, two-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-seven million, twenty-five-point-two million, and eleven-point-three million respectively. Member contributions for each plan are up. Employer and employer pay credit for all three are also up, while the AALC and the General Fund appropriations remain flat. Total outflows were relatively consistent across all three plans, and if we remove the net investment income of fifty-four-point-two million, twelve-point-five million, and nine-point-four million, we can see on the bottom chart that all three plans have a positive net cash flow for the period of one-sixty-eight-point-five, twelve-point-seven, and one-point-nine million. The next page is the insurance statement of fiduciary net position, and similar to the pension statements, the net position at the end of Q2 for all three plans is two-point-five billion, and that is fourteen-point-six-nine percent higher than the Q2 amount of last year of two-point-two billion. This is three-hundred-and-seventeen-million dollars higher and is also driven by the twenty-two-point-two-one percent increase in total investments at fair value. If you move on to page forty-eight, the increase in fiduciary net position is one-hundred-and-fifty-point-six-seven million compared to fifty-point-two-eight-nine million in the same period of the prior year. That's a hundred-point-four million higher and driven by the four-billion-dollar increase in Humana gain share, as well as a three-point-five-million-dollar increase in employer contributions and a seventy-one-million-dollar increase in overall net investment income. Furthermore, we had twenty-million dollars less in healthcare premium subsidiaries that paid out this period versus last period. If I now moved to the contribution report for the insurance funds on page forty-nine, all three plans reported positive net contributions, fifty-seven-point-eight million, point-four million, and one-point-nine million respectively. However, if we remove the net investment income of twenty-point-one million, seven-point-four million, and three-point-one million, the K hazardous and the state police plans have a negative net cash flow for the period, whereas the K non-hazardous plan remains at thirty-seven-point-seven million positive cash flow. That's all I have on those statements. Before I move on to invoices, is there any questions on those? Hearing none? Oh, go ahead.
Please go ahead, Lane.
Yep, go ahead, Sheri, to page fifty right there. Okay, so, I'm sorry. So, this is the outstanding invoices by employer. The twelve-thirty twenty-twenty-three grand total of five-point-eight million dollars is twenty-six percent higher than the grand total of four-point-six million at the end of September. This increase is due to AALC, specifically related to the Kentucky River Community Care, as well as some health insurance reimbursement and standard sick leave increases. The top ten employers that make up that difference, or that make up that balance are listed there. Some of them have three asterisks by their name. That means those invoices have been turned over to legal for further action. That Kentucky River. That Kentucky River Community Care is all A A L C related. The rest of those employers are a combination of sick leave, health insurance reimbursement, pensions spiking, et cetera. There are some newcomers to the list. A lot of that has to do with timing and related to some sick leave invoices that have been accrued for the end of the quarter. Some of them have been paid since then. But I wanted to point out those agencies. There's a couple of new ones on there. If I move on to the penalty invoice report, we had zero penalty invoices waived this quarter. Seven penalty invoices were created for the quarter and one penalty invoice was paid for the quarter. Then the next page begins the admin budget. This is a high-level summary. I'm going to talk through some of the line items on the left-hand side. So first off is the personnel category. We've spent nearly $17 million or 16.8 million, which is 49% of the budget in that line item. You see that all line items have more than 50% remaining except workers comp. Let me, Sherri, if you don't mind, just page down one more. Yeah, so within this personnel line item, all the remaining line items have more than 50% except for workers comp. But that is a one-time charge that was already paid. We won't have any additional charges this year. So by the time we get to the end of the budget, it should be right online there. You can stay here for a minute. The legal line item in total, we're right on budget. But there are some specific line items that are approaching their annual capacity. We are watching those closely and will adjust within the legal categories as needed. The auditing line item specifically right there, we were billed for the ACF of about $215,000. We still have 200, we still have $85,000 left in that budget line item. But we do anticipate a $35,000 invoice or so. That's the estimate for the proportionate share audits that you just had Mr. Gordon present to you. So that invoice should be coming shortly. Will still be under budget, I believe, for that line item for the fiscal year. All other personnel categories and line items all have more than 50% capacity left. Bringing the total category is a $20.1 million spent for the half year with 51.86% left to spend. This overall total is 6.96% higher than the prior year. The next page and a half is the operational line items. If you go to the bottom of the next or the middle of the next page, you'll see that it's at $2.3 million with 66.12% of the budget left to spend. This is $243,000 or 11.9% higher than the prior year. The computer software equipment line item is 25.3%, 25.36% higher or $261,000, but it's still well under budget for this period. Postage is 60.15% higher or $56,000, but also well under budget. The total budget prior to reserve is at 24.6 million with 58.96% left to spend and is 7.47% higher than the prior year amount or $1.4 million higher. That's all I have on that schedule. I do want to point out that chart at the bottom is the hybrid percentage that takes these admin expenses and allocates them out to the appropriate pension plans as presented. The next page is the presentation of the J P Morgan interest earned on the Chase accounts as well as the fees that are being charged on a monthly basis, and we continue to track them and monitor them on an ongoing basis. I believe that's all I have for presentation.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions for Mike? Of course, you know I do. Mike, given that we're almost at the end of the third quarter, do you see this trend continuing that we're probably going to not have to ever use any of the reserves and things look pretty good for the end of the year?
For this fiscal year, I think the reserve is safe. Currently, for next fiscal year and the year after, our budget is at the, in the hands of the legislative, the legislative agencies as they debate next year's buy-in in budget. If, as that budget currently stands, we would be less, we would be allocated less money than we currently have, and that could threaten the reserve in future years. But we are working with some senators to try to increase that proposed budget amount so that does not become an issue. But as it currently stands, right now, it's about 5 million less than this $50 million budget. And so that's a little concerning to me. But for this fiscal year, the reserve is safe.
So you, you're expecting them to basically eliminate what we use as the reserve from the budget?
I mean, they're not specifically eliminating the reserve. What they've done in the budget process so far is they eliminated 95% of our vacant
Okay.
positions, which resulted in about a $3 or $4 million reduction in what we proposed for budget.
Okay, so effectively, that's the, okay, well, good luck.
Let me give an active discussion with legislators if they're replaced.
The second question I had, Michael, on the J P Morgan Chase report. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. The net fees for last year for those six months was 44,000. And so are we netting $300,000 more now than we used to? Am I reading that correctly?
So we've converted all those accounts to hard-bearing interest accounts. So the second chart shows you the interest that we are earning on the balances in the J P Morgan accounts. Yes, we've, since July, we have earned $344,000 of hard dollar interest. And our fees for that same period of time is $44,000. The July, August, September amounts, those smaller amounts are, we were still had a few accounts that were offsetting earnings and fees. But we're no longer doing that. We're just taking hard dollar interest. So if you take that 344, offset the fees of 44, we've netted $300,000 in in income related to changing those bank accounts over. And that, that will continue as long as the interest rates are up, right? So if the interest rates go back down to zero, we would have more fees than interest for sure.
Yeah, we did it at the right time. So are you, what are you, so am I, am I, am I reading this right? Is our nets in the report that we're looking around 300,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, congratulations. Good job. Okay, anybody else with questions for Mike? Okay, next we have Pruitt with the quarterly investment report.
Good morning. Just make one editorial comment, the obvious, that basically all of the market segments are roaring, some roaring more than others, but it's been very, very positive in the last 45 days or so. And we hope that, can only hope that that continues. And I'll let Steve present the details.
Thank you, Pruitt. Good morning, everyone. So the Kentucky Retirement Systems, as the memo indicates, Investment Committee held their regularly scheduled meeting on February 21st. At that meeting, no recommendations were made that required approval by the Investment Committee and no actions were taken that required ratification by the Kentucky Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. As Pruitt mentioned, it's not just been the last 45 days, but the last quarter that ended December 31st of the second quarter of the fiscal year. Markets across the board rebounded sharply on optimism that earlier and larger cuts in interest rates would usher in essentially a Goldilocks period of steady growth, moderate inflation, and easing financial conditions. Confidence was high that the Fed would be able to thread that needle and avoid a recession, hit that soft landing or no landing scenario. At the time, markets were pricing in approximately six 25 basis point rate cuts during calendar 2024. As we know, markets have come off of that a little bit, currently pricing in more realistic three rate cuts in calendar 2024 and pushing out the first rate cut from, from March to June, July timeframe currently. For the quarter, all of the portfolios performed well with returns of between 5.64% and 6.45% and outperformed their respective benchmarks by between 11 and 59 basis points. All of the portfolios have produced top quartile or top decile risk-adjusted performance over the last one, three, and five-year time periods. I think that's, that's something we like to highlight certainly as an investment staff. Given the asset allocation and the guidelines and the IPS that you provided, the performance that, that we've been able to achieve within those constraints really shows well against the peer universe. Staff continued to make progress moving the portfolios towards their IPS asset allocation targets at the end of fiscal year. Across, at the end of fiscal '22, across the six portfolios, there were a total of 25 individual asset allocations that were not in compliance with their allowable IPS ranges. As of the end of the second quarter of fiscal '23, that had been reduced to 14. As of today, and this is taking into consideration the recently approved changes to the asset allocations, there's only two asset classes that are not in compliance with the ranges, and those are cash in the K E R S and S P R S pension portfolios. And we anticipate all of the asset allocations will be within their allowable ranges and close to their targets by the end of this quarter. As of the end of the quarter, there were no other violations aside from those asset allocation range violations that were reported. Through the first six months of the fiscal year, actual expenses are running well below the amounts budgeted for the year with only 75% of the amount budgeted for the year remain, with 75% of the amount budgeted for the year remaining. And that's primarily been driven by the legal expense category, which is well below what's been budgeted. Legal does tell me, though, that we anticipate in the second half of the fiscal year that those expenses could rise pretty dramatically, given the pickup in legal activity on a number of cases. I also wanted to highlight a few investment highlights from the, from the first half of the fiscal year. Most importantly, across a number of legs, staff was able to rebalance the core fixed income portfolio, closing the tactical short-duration position, which entailed moving the duration of the overall portfolio from approximately three years short relative to the benchmark to essentially flat. And that, that entailed moving about 1.9 billion was transferred from the Lord Abbott Short Duration Credit Portfolio with about 996 million going to the two existing core portfolios managed by NISSA and LUMIS and a little over 900 million moving to the new internally passive, passively managed core portfolio. I did wanted to highlight that that Lord Abbott portfolio, that was a tactical position that was made, short duration relative to the benchmark. And the Lord Abbott portfolio was not a performance-related reason for reducing it. It was, it was purely a moving back the duration of the overall portfolio. That Lord Abbott product performed well on an absolute and relative basis, outperforming its benchmark and contributed significantly to the outperformance of the overall core portfolio. So over the last three years, our core portfolio outperformed the benchmark by 381 basis points, which equates to over $300 million of outperformance across the system. So that's across pension and insurance, across K C and State Police, which is pretty significant. So that, that, that was a, a very good decision. You know, what we were looking for from a tactical standpoint was that reversal of that zero-interest rate world where rates started to become attractive, where duration would, would be a ballast to the other asset classes. We, we were lagging into that extension of the portfolio. So we did that over, over really a six-month period. And looking at, you know, timing, sometimes it's better to be lucky to good. Timing-wise, if we hadn't rebalanced the portfolio relative to what we were actually able to achieve in rebalancing, resulted in an improvement of about 160 basis points of performance for the period for the core portfolio. So again, it, it performed well as rates rose, and then as rates started to peak, we peeled back that duration short and we were able to increase performance by 160 basis points over the last six months. The addition of the internally managed portfolio is anticipated to save between 1.5 and $2 million in fees per year. We're also embarking on a structural review of the core portfolio with Wilshire, really to determine that we have the right mix of both managers and strategies in that portfolio, passive versus active, internal versus external. We hope to bring some recommendations before the Investment Committee and the Board in the second half of this fiscal year. Specialty credit managers continued to find compelling opportunities, deploying over 150 million during the quarter. And these included the first capital calls for the new Adam Street Fund and co-investment vehicle that were approved in 2023. And as we saw on, on some of Mike's reports, a total of just under 300 million was called and invested by the real return managers, the majority of which were the initial investments for Arctos and Maritime Partners, two of the managers that were approved in 2023. I'd also highlight that the, the first proxy voting report was posted to the website. So happy to report that we're in compliance with the revised statutes. We will be posting that report on a quarterly basis to the website, which shows how all of the proxies for the systems were voted. And either managers or our proxy voting service are voting according to the K R S proxy voting policy. January performance was just finalized and distributed last week. As we saw, it reflected the soggy market conditions at the beginning of the year with returns mixed across asset classes. Portfolio performance ranged from up two basis points to down 10 basis points against the benchmark indices that were essentially flat. While February performance is still very preliminary, as Pruitt mentioned, markets have done well the last 45 days or so. And the portfolios are indicated to be up between 2 and 2.5% for the month of February. Additionally, we are, at the specially-held meetings earlier this year, we approved the Saba Capital, which was ratified by the Board. We're very close to finalizing that investment management agreement. And we anticipate capital being called and invested very quickly once the, the documents are executed. So we're, we're excited for that opportunity. That's all I had, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Pruitt. Are there any questions? Well, good job. If you can keep the market like this, we'd all appreciate it.
We will do our best. Thank you.
Okay. There is no action to come out of this, but we appreciate the report. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Denton contract. If you all remember, we addressed the Denton contract in December and, or November, one of them. And it was recommended by one of the trustees that we go back and talk to Denton and make sure we have a really good handle on the pricing of this contract. Based on that decision, we extended the Denton contract for three months, and it expires now at the end of March. John, John and I went to, or not went, we zoomed in with Ben, zoomed in, yeah, with Ben and discussed the contract, discussed the rate increase and talked about the way that they provide services. The rate of 325, right? It's 325, John? 350. It's 325, was 325, and we go into 350 is a combined rate of Ben, Janet, any of the attorneys, also the various support that they get. Primarily, we meet with Ben. So the rate is really a lower rate than you get and from many of the commercial legal firms. And on top of that, when you look at the budget, we, we actually budget, I think it's $50,000. It's not, we, we really don't have a lot of legal expenses from Denton. So with that, both John and I are happy with the response, and we would like that there be a motion to approve the contract. The contract would be for a 15-month extension going to the end of June, and that way it also would end with the rest of our, our, or the normal way that contracts end. And I think that would help us not have a situation like we had where all of a sudden we had to rush to get the Denton contract approved. So with that, is there a motion to approve the contract with Denton being on Greenbaum as presented?
I'll make a motion that, that the contract is, as you all have negotiated with Ben. I'll make a motion that the contract is, as you all have negotiated with Ben.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Pamela Thompson.
Thank you very much, Pam. Okay, all those in favor, or is there any further discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstention?
Mary, do you want to abstain?
I will abstain.
Okay, Mary's going to abstain. And all those opposed? Hearing that, the motion is adopted. Thank you all very much. Okay, now for the really good work. We're going to have some reports from John and then from Dave. So John, you're up first.
Yeah, mine's fairly short. I've been attending all the Public Pension Oversight Board meetings, do that every month to monitor the things that they're talking about and have side conversations with some of the board members there, Public Pension Oversight Board members. Also, on a different topic, everybody, all the trustees will be getting and probably have been getting an ethics disclosure request, which is due by the 15th of April. The purpose of that is to disclose relationships. There are no dollars to be recorded, but only relationships that you have with others. When you complete that, I'd suggest you print out a copy so you can have it for next year, and that'll make it easier to prepare that report. That's due April 15. Also, a reminder that in doing business with the Kentucky Retirement Systems, KPPA, you should only use your KPPA email address. Do not use your personal email for any of that. One other thing is that there are educational requirements for all trustees. I think it's 12 hours of training in some way. There are lots of things that qualify for that. Those of you that have professional licenses that are relevant to the retirement systems, if you go to seminars, have educational activity, all of that, that qualifies. Any personal reading that you do, technology training on how to maintain security of our Board Smart is now in 3.0. I'm going to be sending out the directions on how to do that. That's got a lot of really, really good information about our legal responsibilities, as well as our responsibilities to the boards. So I think that's all I've got right now.
Okay. Thank you, John. Let me add a little bit to your statement about using the KPPA email address. This is not a requirement. I know that some people, including myself, use the, my personal when I'm traveling especially. But the, there is a warning, and that is if, for some reason, we had a lawsuit and they did open records request, if you're using your personal email address, they can actually ask for, to give a, whatever, disclosure of your personal email address. So, you know, basically, it's for our benefit if we're able to continue to use the KPPA email address. And so hopefully, that explains the reason that we hope that you can use it. Again, I have to say, I'm probably one of the abusers of that, of using my personal email address.
Yeah. Something to add to that. Is this right, Dave? You can use your personal device, but you access the email through the KPPA app to do that. So it's not a restriction on a device, it's a restriction on the email account. That's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Dave?
Sure.
Your report?
Yeah, I had included an update within the seven-day limit in terms of putting a seven days in advance of the meeting. There's a whole lot going on, and if, first of all, if anybody has questions on any of the topics and they want to raise it today or follow up and ask me in a private conversation, I'm happy to do that. There is so much going on right now at the legislature that I asked a day ago to get an update on the legislative aspect of it. I asked, I reached out to Sean, and he worked with Katie and Sherry to get an update. And I'll touch on four bills, well, five, actually. Our Housekeeping Bill, which is not on this current list, we got through the House, I think it was 98 to nothing. Can't remember, 96 or 98.
96.
Yeah.
96.
Unopposed.
Unopposed. And we had the same experience last year, and then we got two readings at the Senate, and it stalled, and we're still scratching our heads. We don't want that to happen again. So we're actively promoting with the Senate, key senators, making sure that they, if there's any concerns about that bill, they air it and we address it. The most recent meeting to discuss that was at nine o'clock this morning, so we're on it.
Dave, could I ask who, just in case we, some of us, you know, unfortunately run across those legislators, who are the key names that we should say, hey, you know, help us?
House, the bill sponsor is D.J. Johnson, and on the House side, we're all set, it's been voted on unanimously, and he's been very cooperative, and we've worked on that bill since, gosh, last July or August. On the Senate side, Chair of the ANR is Robbie Mills, and we have a, I think it's fair to say, we have a good relationship with Senator Mills, but we're going to reach out to him. And based on that, we're going to see if we think we need to go to leadership, and that's kind of like the, would be the last effort, would be go directly to leadership on it. There's nothing controversial in the bill. It's the same bill with one little minor exception that was, that passed the House last year unanimously and got two votes, had two readings in the Senate, and then again, we're all scratching our heads. Nobody seems to know why that didn't go to get voted on, but we are already determined not to vote that having again this year.
Okay. That, that, that's helpful. Thank you.
And as always, Senator McDaniel is a big influence and has been a supporter in other things we've done. House Bill 6, first of my four to add to here, allocates $250 million a year to K9HAS. It's a continuation of the pattern that started three years ago, where we're getting multiple hundred million dollars either into the state police in the first year, but the second two years into, we get $240 million a year in fiscal '23 and '24 into K9HAS, over and above the ARC. And the ARC, I would say, both we and GRS would say is appropriately, at an appropriate level now, not at shorting it in any way, it's very fair. So it's great news, another $500 million coming into K9HAS, which is sorely needed, but it's on a good trajectory. The House Bill 20, there's been a lot of interest in a COLA. House Bill 20 is not a COLA, but it's a, provides an increase to the benefit for K9HAS and state police. What's K9HAS, KHAS and state police, provides an increase in their benefit of 2%, and that's 2% that'll stay in place indefinitely. So a COLA would be, just to distinguish, a COLA would be, they get 2% this year, and then they get another 2% next year on top of that, and another 2%. This is, we're raising their benefit by 2%, and it's not a one-time allocation of 2%, but it's a one-time adjustment that'll stay in place. So the average, K9HAS, the average retiree gets about $20,000 a year roughly, so that would mean they're going to get $20,400. And so it's meaningful. You know, people talk to in the General Assembly about other people, employee, retiree groups, and talk about, you know, make it another thing, buy a set of tires, you know, do something meaningful with it, and this would appear to be that. House Bill 635 increases some of the requirements for actuarial analysis. It, I think it reached more into when assumptions are changed, what are the, what's the actuarial impact of doing that? A little more rigorous than we've had in the past, and from this, from management standpoint, staff standpoint, the transparency of that, I think, is beneficial. It's really helped us, this whole idea of being more transparent over the years has resulted, I think, you can't point directly, but why do we get $250 million extra, I think? Because they, they feel that the money is being invested well, and it's being, they're made aware of the impact of it, so it's, it has improved and helped and has paid dividends, I believe. I did mention in the memo, I think I counted, when I counted noses, I think we've had at least eight people in the, on the staff who have interacted with legislators in one way or another. And this is a broad effort on our part to get as many people as possible to support our message. And a key person in that has been evolving, I think it's fair to say, evolving over the years, but has really taken a big leadership position, is Erin. She is relied on, gets calls, is asked to come to the table with legislators frequently, and that didn't happen three or four years ago. So they're getting good advice and good perspective, and they're trusting in the information they get from her. Over the years, the common, common point we got, I guess we'd say, complaint maybe? I don't know, from legislators, a couple in particular said, we got to fix this pension spiking problem. We can't nibble away at it. We got to take some bigger steps. This year, Representative Blanton took that task on and authored a bill, House Bill 661. Erin has been working continuously with it in terms of interaction and meetings, and meetings with he and other legislators, going to the table at committee hearings. And so Erin, spiking is big. You want to speak to that bill?
It is. House Bill 661 is a bill that Representative Blanton has sponsored, as Mr. Eager has said. This bill just adds language to the bona fide promotion or career advancement definition that basically says that across-the-board raises or raises for all employees in a specified class are considered to be a bona fide promotion or a career advancement, and it does not count towards pension spiking. This essentially codifies a recent court ruling that we received on the matter, and it codifies that in the statute. So that's what this bill is doing.
That's good.
Hi, Sarah. Lynn, I don't have anything else of the questions.
You going to talk about the office? The local, Louisville office?
Oh, well, that was in the original, but yeah, I'll comment on it.
Dave, before you leave the legislature, what is the impetus or whose idea or what, where does, if it didn't originate from KPPA, the actuarial transparency reforms or changes or who's that? Where did that?
I'm not sure I know the full answer, but the champion of that was Representative Jerry Miller, who did not choose to run. He's, this is the first year he's not been in the legislature. He was really a champion of some of the actuarial issues.
Several things, yes.
I don't know if that's a residual of his interest in the past, but, and he was, he was very supportive of working with us and trying to strengthen the systems.
So you don't think it arose from any dissatisfaction with the level of transparency or just best practice to have more or?
I, you know, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Could be. I don't know specifically. Louisville office, we are in the process. Rebecca, are you on the line? Call.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to speak to the Louisville office, please?
We had briefly a bill in order to allow us to lease a space in Louisville without 45A. We withdrew that. The Secretary of Finance met with us separately. She's been super helpful. That's Secretary Johnson. She's been super helpful to us on getting some forward movement on our office lease. So we've met with them, we finalized our agency request. They are currently in the process of drafting out what we want. We'll get final approval on that. We being Steve Willer and his team, Dave and I, will get final approval on that, and then they'll issue the equivalent of an RFP. It's not quite an RFP, there's special rules about it under 45A specific to leases. It's called an invitation. And so then entities can respond to this invitation, and then we will look at each and every property that responds, and I'm hopeful we are closer. I still think close is probably three to six months, but I am hopeful we are closer. But it is moving.
Yeah, and we're talking about space, we think it's adequate, quite adequate to operate, to add some additional staff, to have conference room facilities and so forth. The other, Lynn, can I come in on one more thing? There was a note in about the executive director search. That's the committee of Bill Maher, Keith, Pierce, Siegel, Hampton, and Betty Pendergrass. They have been working vigorously and a lot of meetings. I am obviously not on the committee, I am what's called a technical advisor, so I attend meetings. I would commend them for the work they're doing. Very thorough, a very good process. They've all put in a lot of time. Bill Maher in particular deserves a lot of credit, and I'm hopeful the process will complete in this upcoming quarter and that we'll have a very competent, capable person moving into that role.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment of my own on the Louisville office. Dave probably would, and Rebecca both, would probably tell you, it's been my number-one nagging issue with them. You know, since the investment office, they had to move, we have not been able to have interns. If they want to have a meeting together, they have to come here, and they all live in Louisville. And, you know, it's been not only an inconvenience, but it's hurt us as far as our forward-looking, that we're not able to bring in interns, we're not able to look forward if we want to train somebody and bring them into the staff in the future. If somebody, perchance, we had, luckily, we don't have to replace somebody, but if we, I don't know how we'd ever train somebody if we had to hire somebody right now. So there is some urgency in here, and I know staff's working on it, but we need to see if we can get the finance staff to also share that sense of urgency in getting this space available.
I think, I think we, we believe we're there.
Yeah. I believe we're there. They've been very responsive. Their staff talks to me almost every week about where they are and what they're doing, so.
Yeah. Rebecca, when you said three to six months, I cringed, so.
I do, too. I'm hoping it's on the three-month side of that. That's.
Well, I can lend you my nagging mask.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I also have a question of you. Are you going to make Joe Gilbert move to Louisville? You said all the staff.
Oh, no. Gilbert moves down this way, then. Yeah.
One that's not there.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. But I think the reason for the Louisville office in the beginning was because investment advisors and people like that come into town, things like that. Not just because Steve, not they, they live there, yeah.
Well, there are a number of.
We appreciate, we appreciate Rebecca's been working very hard. I know there was, there was a pathway that we thought would be easier and quicker to being able to establish an office, but that didn't work out. I agree, I would prefer a more compressed timeline, but I think, you know, I do think we see the end of the rainbow here. I think, I think we're getting closer, and we're optimistic that we can move forward pretty quickly. So I will be excited to have an office space.
And Steve, for you and Anthony and everyone, I have nothing anybody ever says about eliminating the work-at-home options. the work-at-home options, it just to be, to be able to make sure that we're able to cover all these other bases.
For sure. I would love to, you know, have interns again. I think that's beneficial for us as an agency, for us as a staff, as well as, you know, I think it's an exciting opportunity for students, so I'd love to be able to have that again. And I'm, you know, I'm old, so I'm old school. I like to go into an office, I would prefer, I would prefer that. And, you know, I think the hybrid has worked well for us. As a staff, I want to make sure, I mean, we communicate daily, I'm getting ready to go meet Anthony for coffee. You know, we talk daily, meet frequently, so things are not being missed, but I would, I would like to have a home base as well.
Yeah. Coffee in the office. Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to comment on this? I think at some point, we'd really have to thank Steve, and Anthony, and Joe, and all for their patience. Okay. The next thing we have on the agenda was new business from me, and I think we've basically covered the new business in talking about the office space. So with that, I'm sorry? I'm sorry? It was, Pam? Somebody just said something.
I think it was just an echo.
Was that Rebecca?
Yes, that was me. I believe it was an echo.
It was an echo. I silenced it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next, I have on the agenda is closed session, and with closed session, is there a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810C to discuss pending litigation?
I saw move.
Okay, Mary is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think that was Pruitt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is adopted, and Vicki, is there a statement we make before going into closed session? Or Michael, if he's on?
Carrie?
Yes, I'm here. We can, I can read the statement before we leave and go into closed session. It's just that a motion having been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose, and such motion having carried by a majority vote in open public session, the board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to KRS 61.810C because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney-client privilege.
Okay, thank you, Michael.